Hello everyone, and welcome to another edition of Growing Kentucky's Leaders. I'm one of your hosts Sheldon McKinney.
And I'm your other host Ruth Ann Fink.
And we have a wonderful guest today, a great friend to FFA and a friend of mine too, Adam Hinton. Adam is a co-owner of a fourth generation agribusiness in Kentucky called Hinton Mills, a co-owner of the Kentucky Welding Institute. He is a servant and community leader. He's a great donor to the Kentucky FFA Foundation, a former board member, and former chairman of the Kentucky FFA Foundation. So Adam, how about you just introduce yourself? Tell the folks who you are, and maybe a little bit about your FFA story too.
Yeah, no, thank you guys for having me. This is awesome. I appreciate that you guys are doing this and hopefully that the classrooms across Kentucky are enjoying getting to know folks. So yeah, like you said, Sheldon and I have known each other for a while. We both grew up in Fleming County and eventually spent a lot of time together with Kentucky FFA Foundation. But before that, I just grew up around Fleming County, grew up in the little village of plumbers landing population of about 20. And grew up around our family farm supply business and all the heroes that I had growing up were people that worked at Hinton Mills or customers that came in. I kind of thought that was the universe. So I grew up around people in agriculture and went to Fleming County High School and I didn't get involved in FFA until my last two years of high school. I was much more engaged in high school athletics and just other things that I had interest in. And you know, so I kind of felt like I missed the boat in high school on what FFA had to offer, but I had a respect for FFA and the folks that were involved with it and didn't get involved in FFA until much later. Actually, I went to college here in Kentucky, went to a little private college in Danville called Center College. A lot of you guys know that of course. And then I worked in college athletics and did marketing. And it wasn't until after that, that at some point I moved back home and joined our family business and realized that really where I wanted to be was in Kentucky and just developed an affinity for agriculture. And through that, got to know a lot of people in FFA from working with local FFA programs and just had been thoroughly impressed with all the young people that I got to deal with through that. And then eventually just got much more engaged with Kentucky FFA through the foundation.
Yeah, you've been a great friend to us over the years. We've had a lot of fun together, for sure.
We have, we have. And met a lot of great people, not just the students, but the folks that are teachers or donors and involved in some capacity with Kentucky FFA have just been, just been awesome people that have enriched my life and people that I've learned a lot from and folks that I've got stories about.
Yeah.
Adam, you're such a great connector of people. I have to share, one thing I always look forward to is every Christmas, getting that handwritten thank you card, a Christmas card from you and your family. It's always really special. And I know you make a point to do that with all the state officers that come through and you could just spend time with. But I think that just goes to show the kind of person that you are and it's much appreciated.
We, I appreciate you saying that. We enjoy telling that story. And as you know, that those Christmas cards usually tell the story of somebody connected to our family, our business. In some cases, it's paying tribute to somebody that's, that's passed away that, that previous year. So they're really, really personal. And for me, it's become a time period each year that I look forward to is just kind of reflecting on the year to people that I have gotten to know over the years and maybe in some cases, folks that I've not got to know as well as I would like. But I, there was, there's a guy that was a salesperson that had sent me a note this year and we hadn't, we've not seen each other for something like nine years. And he sent me a note. He said, man, I just want, he had had a picture of the Christmas card. And he said, I just want you to know how much I look forward to and appreciate this each year. He said, what have I done to deserve to get on this Christmas card list? And I said, well, once you get in, you know, in the circle, man, you, it's hard to announce. You just gotta, you gotta wanna get out or force your way out. But if, once you get in kind of the circle of people that we love, it's just, you're in there.
Yeah.
Well, I think that's a good testament. I do want to talk about Hinton Mills some. And you know, Hinton Mills is all about serving farmers in the community that you're in. You guys do such a good job with that. And you have been a host on so many of the visits that we take Kentucky FFA state officers to. And you give a great talk about service and hospitality and how that really runs Hinton Mills. You know, and for those that don't know, Hinton Mills, maybe you aren't from where your stores are at. It's a, it's a farm store. You guys sell lots of things and seed and feed and supplies. But those that know Hinton Mills know it's so much more than a farm store. So what are the principles that do set Hinton Mills apart?
Well, I think you, you hit the nail on the head. I mean, basically, we're the same farm store for the most part is, is what we sell is, is the little, you know, fill in the blank farm store in any town across Kentucky or across the US. And, and that's, you know, kind of grew up, what I grew up with. But we have, you know, as I mentioned earlier, I went and worked at a university for, for about nine years. And when I came back, it was just so vastly different, or at least from the perspective of the folks that I had previously worked with. They said, man, you've, you've went from working with primarily college students in Daytona Beach, Florida, working in college athletics. And you've moved back to, you know, to Flemingsburg, to a town of 3,000, and you're working in a farm supply store with, you know, primarily with the, with the older clientele to a certain extent. And you know, they asked if I liked it. And of course I told them I did. And they said, well, what's the thing that you enjoy about it most? And for me, it's been, and Sheldon turned me say this a lot, it's that the fact that I've been able to instill, you know, basically live our values through our work. And so at Hinton Mills, I think that is maybe what, what makes everybody unique is when you start bringing your personal values and kind of who you are to your business. And so that's what I encourage young people to think about is wherever you go to work, just make sure that, that there's a place that they appreciate you as a person and that that's, you know, kind of ingrained in what you do. So for us, you know, it starts with the, you know, the one slogan, I guess the one on my shirt on this logo is, you know, it's serving farmers since 1918. So the, you know, the key word in that is, is the serving part, you know, I think is, is, is part of it. The other thing is, you know, we've got the little calf head that, that you guys have heard that story about the, my great grandfather being an orphan and raising a baby calf. And that's kind of how our business started is him raising baby calves. And that's what this little calf represents. So I think, you know, kind of never forgetting kind of where we started, our humble beginnings and that we, you know, just, you know, the seed that he planted that grew into 106 years later, you know, what we are today. And I think the other thing is, I've got it here on some letterhead. I don't know if you can see it, but it says Hinton Mills. It says faith, family, friends, and farming. So we, we met with a good friend of yours and in mine a handful of years ago. And it was Cody Back and we were doing some, some different things, but part of it was just like mission, value, vision statements. And one of the things he asked is, you know, do you guys have a mission statement? And we didn't think that we did. We were already using this, this faith, family, friends, and farming thing on, on a lot of, a lot of internal things, a lot of shirts. And, but after we got done meeting with Cody, we kind of realized that we already had it. It just happened to be four, four words, faith, family, friends, and farming. And so I think that that's one thing that makes us unique is we, we, we keep those things in that particular order as our business grows and as we grow as individuals, kind of in, in perspective is the faith, family, friends, and farming. So the, the farming business is just, it, it happens to be what we do, but it's not necessarily, it's who we are. It's just a piece of who we are and it helps allow us to be who we are. So we try to, not just in our personal lives and, and at home, be who we are. We try to be that every day at work. And so we're blessed with, you know, we've got six locations and 70 some amazing people that we work with. And that's, that's who Hinton Mills is, is we've had the ability to recruit, retain, in some cases retire, just, you know, just amazing people. And so to your question, Ruth Ann, I mean, I think that's, we're just blessed with great people and that's helped us develop into, into who we are. And not just presently, it's, it's all the folks over the years that's, that's been who we are. So it's been, it's been a lot of fun. I'll, I'll say this now is, you know, I've thought about my great grandfather started as one individual person that, that started this business, you know, kind of as a nine-year-old and it eventually turned into actual family business in 1918. And when he and my great grandmother started, it was just the two of them. And then eventually he added an employee. And there's tons of employees that I'm sure I didn't know about from the twenties, thirties, forties, whatever. But I do think back to the time period that I'm familiar with, you know, the eighties, nineties and beyond. And there would be people that may just work for us or work on our team for maybe two weeks. But for them, that two weeks was really important because it helped them transition into another part of their life. And then there's people like, you know, Bill Cooper that's worked for us for 53 years or Marsh Newman, 48 years. That those people, you know, Hinton Mills was obviously a really key part of their life and their family members' lives for a long time. And, and literally helped put food on the table for, for years. And so I think it's just kind of cool, the ripple effect and the layers when somebody, you know, does something, starts something that you may not ever get to see what it fully grows into. But it's, 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 we've been blessed along the way just to have those right people to make it work. So.
Yeah. It is so special. You know, as a person who, I've grown up in Fleming County, raising my kids here in Fleming County, and you all have expanded, you're more than just Fleming County. But you know, there's not a whole lot in Flemingsburg. It's a small town, but it's a really special town. It's because people give back and pour into the community. And you were at the forefront of that, Adam. You, you all host Christmas events and Santa at the farm store and our tractor parade. And so much of what makes this community so special is because of people who are pouring back into it like you. And so it really matters.
Well, we love, I mean, that's, we, we love our community. And that's what I tell people on the faith, family, friends, and farming. I mean, the faith, I hope that that's evident for us. That's, you know, faith in, in Jesus Christ. And for other folks, that may be something else, but, but that's where it starts. And then the, the family for us is not just people last name Hinton, it's people on our team. We, we talk about our work family all the time. So it's, it's our individual families, our work family and their families. And then the friends, that really represents our community and our customers. And so that's before we even get to the, to the agriculture side of things, the farming things, is you've got that community piece falling right before that. So, so for us, community is everything. We wouldn't have, we wouldn't have anything if it wasn't for the support that we've had from our communities over the years. And so we just love to, and it's evolved what we do because like right now, we all have young children. My brothers and I, the fourth generation, we all have, I've got a daughter, a 10-year-old daughter. And my, my brothers each have children. And so we do a lot of stuff that is, that's focused on children. And we love it. So it started with like the things with FFA and it was the mutton bustin' tour. And now we do this, this learning program last year where we had folks like Commissioner Quarles and Ms. Kentucky and Wildlife Commissioner Rich Storm. And so we do all these fun things. And you guys talked about the Christmas event. But we just, I mean, I think we're created to be people that live in community and, and we hopefully live that to the fullest.
You do, you do. I'm so, I'm grateful to get to be part of this community with you all. So I have a question about the Kentucky Welding Institute. So you told me, what year did you start KWI?
2015.
In 2015?
Yeah, looking into 2014 and started in 15.
Bobby Pease, who was, he did his student teaching when I was in high school, but the local Fleming County High School Agriculture Teacher. I feel like in April or May, you said, we're, we decided we're going to open a welding school. And I'm like, oh, great. That sounds cool. And you're like, and it's going to be open in August. And I'm like, okay, that seems so impossible. And you all did it. And it opened in August. And tell people about who, what the Kentucky Welding Institute is and how big it's really gotten.
Yeah, it's so, yeah, it's, it's been fun. It's been, you know, with, with Hinton Mills, I've got to just join in later in life that, you know, it started in 1918 and I didn't start working until I was, you know, 11 or 12 on summers and Saturdays and stuff like that and grew up around the business. So there's a lot of stuff I wasn't there for. But with KWI, it's, you know, it's a different experience for sure when you're there at the, the, the ground floor. So when I talk, will tell that story about my great grandfather being an orphan and raising the baby calf and leading to Hinton Mills. You know, I guess that, that comparable story to KWI would be Bobby Pease and I sitting on the back porch in the summer of 2014 at my house. And we were talking about students that he had had that basically I was catching up with on old, you know, former students that he had that were in FFA and we're so-and-so. Well, he's in Oklahoma. Well, why'd he end up there? And, you know, going through all these people, and there were people that I knew that added so much value to our community when they were in high school that I looked forward to what they would add to this community in this region in the future. And, and like, it, I don't know if it was just coincidence, like eight or nine out of the first 10 people I probably asked about had moved away. And almost every one of them, because of Bobby's affinity and, and, you know, the fact that he is engaged in teaching welding and does such a good job at that, they had moved away to weld. And so they, they went away to a welding school and then through the connections of that school ended up elsewhere. So I was like, you know, we should start a welding school here in, in Kentucky. Have you ever thought about that? And he's like, oh yeah, I've thought about it. And we got into all that stuff. And, and Sheldon knows that I'm kind of this way, that I'd be like, well, let's, let's just do it. We should start a school. And, and the only person that I know and kind of my circle friends that, that's more aggressive than me is Bobby Pease. So it was, it was really kind of a dangerous situation. So literally like a week later, he came back with a business plan and, you know, we were just, we were just going full throttle. And so we went through the process. I tell people all the time, you know, like different life experiences that, you know, you know, challenging life experiences. But one of those from a professional side is, you know, gosh, you don't want to challenge, start a school. So we started a school from ground up. With less than a year's time, we had purchased a piece of property. It went through all the channels to be, you know, you know, basically accredited with the American Welding Society and with the Proprietary Board here in Kentucky and all those things that you do. And it was really difficult to sell a school that we didn't have a building built. We didn't have, for a long time, didn't have a piece of property, didn't have instructors, didn't have all those things. So we were just basically selling a vision and a dream. And it's been really cool. We started August 24th of 2015 was our first day of instruction. We had 21 students. Most all of those were from Fleming County or a county that touched Fleming County. That we had some students from Montgomery County was as far away as, as they were, which is like a 30-minute drive. And it's grown and, you know, to 700, around 700 graduates over the years, 40-some states that students have come from. Over three-quarters of Kentucky's counties have had students that have come to Fleming County. And it's been awesome because it's really, you know, it's evolved who our community is. And, you know, it's presented all these different fun challenges like housing and, you know, jobs while people are here for a six-month program. So it's just this fast-paced program that folks can come, one of three programs. The most popular one is a six-month program that folks come in and they, they are in our shop or in our classroom for 40 hours a week. We treat it like a job and they're, they're solely focused on, on welding and things connected directly to welding. They're not having to learn, you know, piano or underwater basket weaving or English. Or it's just things that are directly applicable to their career and it's been a real blessing. And the thing that has really helped us is that our students, our graduates have done so well. And that that's helped, you know, it's helped build our reputation. And that's, you know, that's an important thing. If there's young people listening, is that your reputation is, is critical in life, whether it's your business, whether it's, it's, you know, your personal name is, is that it's, it's so important to uphold your reputation and build a good reputation. And you do that by, you know, live in a certain way, not by what you say, but by what you do.
I think it's so great. It is always knocks my socks off anytime I go to KWI to visit.
Bless you, I think.
I know. Isaiah's gonna have to edit some things for us. Um, you are a person who just, if you think you can do something, you really just do it. You are a doer and a dreamer. And I think that's so great because people do support vision. They follow vision. And you're definitely a visionary for sure. And it's been so great to kind of go along for that ride and to see how many students you've impacted that are now have a lucrative career, they're raising families. You know, they can come back home, they're welding half the year, farming half the year. It's awesome to see what's happened. Yeah.
You know, for me, one of the things that made it so attractive, and we've talked about this before Sheldon, is that we had these boxes that we wanted to check. We obviously wanted it to be something that would be, you know, positive for our families and at least, at least not, not take more than it gave to us for whether it's our individual relationship with our spouses, our children, or whatever the case may be, our businesses we were already involved with. But we really looked at it from the most into two most important boxes that I hope that other schools would look at starting this process from was, is it going to be good for the students that come here? And we were confident that it would, that we'd be able to, that's why we started it. We wanted something that would be, you know, that we, we just didn't feel like that they were always getting exactly what they needed. And that, that's, that's why we started this. And then the, the third reason was, we wanted it to be good for our community. And we feel like it has been. We've been able to, as, as you're aware, we've been able to purchase some old buildings. You know, I've got kind of this affinity for old buildings. And we've purchased these, these buildings in town and turned them into, to housing. And we've been able to restore buildings that we felt like were essential for our community, for, for them to, you know, to remain and not just be dilapidated and fall in. And so that's been a fun process. It has just been, KWI spun off into all these other things, employment opportunities and, and just, just really cool things while the students are here. Relationships, most importantly, they're students that I love to hear from past students. My mom called me the other day, it was like two nights ago, and she's telling me that, hey, I ran into, she was telling me, do you remember a student named such and such? I was like, oh yeah. And she's like, oh, he was just, you know, McKay is getting ready to go off on this job and he was telling me about his previous job. And she was so excited and he was so excited. And it's just really cool to hear those success stories. And I'll, you know, kind of, I, I would be remiss not to say this, that the most important thing about KWI, and I think that this would resonate with ag teachers across Kentucky, is those that, that, that teach, is that it's, it's really cool to be involved in the growing process of, of a person. And whether that's your own child or whether that's a niece or nephew, in some cases it's, it's students or whoever you want to mentor. And you may never get to see, you know, what they, what they grow into. You probably won't. If you're older than them, you'll never get to see the, the full picture. But it's just cool to be able to be involved in either planting a seed, watering or fertilizing a seed. And then just knowing and hoping that that, that student that you are engaged with in some way, shape, or form, wherever they end up and they, they're planted, that they're impacting people in, in that community, their life, you know, their families, their churches, their little league teams, their workplace. So it's been fun.
It's so fun. And I have to think about Phillip, who was a state FFA officer. He's one of my favorite stories that you all have to share. And he is a Singletary Scholar at UK. So that's one of the biggest academic scholarships they offer. He was from the Davis County area and is also from Ireland. His family moved here from Ireland. He grew up here, had a Singletary Scholarship UK, wants to be a ag engineer. But after his year of state office, he took time off at UK and went and completed his degree at KWI to just have a skill set. Yeah. So, so special.
So, so Phillip, he was here a couple of weeks ago. I, I got to saw, to see him. He was, was in and it was really, he called me. And, you know, I just, I didn't know he was in Flemingsburg, but it was, it was cool. So he asked if I had time to meet up. So I met up with him and we just spent, you know, 15 minutes out in a parking lot, talking about his experiences. But Phillip, we've had several situations like Phillip, when I became connected with Phillip through Kentucky FFA and through you Sheldon. And he, we, we had the good fortune that he both was a KWI student, but he also worked at Hinton Mills.
Yeah.
So many hours a day during the time here. And those students have been the most fun for me because I've got to, you know, unfortunately, like, like you guys, I'm spread thin and you don't get to spend all the time that you, that you want with individuals. And so those students that also work at, at Hinton Mills, I get to spend, obviously probably more, have a propensity to spend more time with them. And Phillip was just, you know, he's just been awesome. And the, the thing about Phillip is, I think that he reminds you that, about stereotypes in life. And so for me, I probably had, and maybe a lot of people watching this video do, you have maybe a stereotype about certain trades, certain professions. Let's say a welder or just blue collar folks, or maybe it's agriculture folks. People have stereotypes about, about us. And, but Phillip is, is just one of many examples of, I mean, the guy is, is, you know, he's, he's brilliant. He's doing all these other things. He's one, you know, the smartest, one of the smartest students that I've, that I've met, not just welding students, but any students. And doing these really cool things. We've had students that were getting advanced degrees while we were there. We had a student that was a retired chiropractor. We had a student that was the daughter of a former governor. I mean, just really unique stories. And I think that that's an important thing for us all to remember. Whether you're talking agriculture or welding or, or nurses or teachers, that they're, they're, they're all people with unique stories. They just happen to, to have, you know, a similar trade.
Yeah. It's really special what you all have grown. And it's special that how it's evolved over time. And so this dream that you had a few years ago, now we've had state officers graduate from the program. The teachers have came through your program through professional development. It's just, we're getting to see a lot of full circle growth and it's awesome to be a part of. So. Adam, you served on the Kentucky FFA Foundation Board of Trustees for nine years and was chairman for two of those years. I think we had our first, we started our gala while you were our chairman. We raised a million dollars for the first time when you were chairman. We've grown a lot. So think about when you joined the board, probably in 2014 to now, 10 plus years later. Why does our mission and our vision, why is it still so vital that, and what kind of is your reflection about your time on our foundation board?
Well, I think that, you know, the first thing I would say or a handful of things, one is I appreciate that you guys, you know, thought of me to be able to serve in that capacity. It was, you know, it was a blessing for me to get to serve, you know, Kentucky FFA. And then, you know, I don't know how to say this, but selfishly to get to meet so many great people. I mean, whether it was the students, whether it was teachers, but most importantly, you know, those people that give to Kentucky FFA and, and the board itself, over the years, over that nine years, I got to serve with just some really amazing people that have become friends of mine and, and they, they receive Christmas cards, Ruth Ann. You know, just people that I just admire greatly, not just for what they do for Kentucky FFA, but what they do for just people in general. So, I mean, that's, that's kind of the starting point. And I think that that's what, you know, one of the things that make, you know, some of those milestones, that million dollars and that, you know, you've, Kentucky FFA is far surpassed that now. And it's, it's because of the, not just the people on the board and everybody kind of row in that same direction. And the staff members such as yourself, but it's just, as you said earlier, just kind of the heart that people have for Kentucky FFA. I think it's because people have either, A, they've either had this really amazing experience in being in FFA or dealing with an ag teacher. But in some cases, like myself or Paul Mahalum or some other folks, it's because they were impressed or impacted by Kentucky FFA students or students from, you know, various chapters across the state. So I think for me, that's what attracted me more than anything else. Cause as I mentioned earlier, I wasn't overly engaged in FFA and, you know, I hate that I, that I missed out on that. But I was drawn into FFA, both while I was in high school and especially afterwards, just by the type of people that Kentucky FFA is developing, whether it's work ethic, whether it's attitude, whether it's the way that they treat other people, whether it's the fact that they're, that they're career-ready or college-ready. It's just impressive young people that Kentucky FFA is putting out. And so why would you not, why would you not want to be a part of, of FFA and Kentucky FFA?
Yeah. I love that.
That's so true. Why not? Thanks for being such a great spokesperson too. And Adam, we do always ask our guests the same three questions. I will warn you, the first one is the hardest and it is, is the best piece of leadership advice that you've ever received.
Well, I think Sheldon knows this one. She, you know, she alluded to it earlier. And Sheldon also knows that I can't just give one answer, but I, I do have a final answer. But, you know, I'm gonna, I want to tell, I hope it's okay. And if it's, if it's too long, you guys just, you just edit me out. But, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you three things that are really important. One of them is, is I used to think that leadership was all these, these different things. But I just learned this one by being involved with great leaders. And one of the most important characteristics of a leader is somebody that shows up. And so whether it's, whether it's showing up to work, whether it's showing up for your, your kid's little league game after work, whether it's showing up for PTA, whether it's showing up for whatever practice that the FFA or your football team or band has, whether it's showing up to, you know, your friend's grandmother passed away, you've never even met her. But, but, you know, you, you didn't know her, but you know your friend and you know that they're hurting and you know it's important. So I think that showing up is, is the first step of leadership. So I think I'd be remiss not to say that. You know, the, the, the two other things I wanted to, to add in there is, is you're never too young to, to be a leader. And so these are more observations, Ruth Ann, than, than actual advice. But I want to tell this story about Megan Harper. So through the Kentucky FFA Foundation, and this is a really important story to me, is through Kentucky FFA. But I want to tell this story about Megan Harper. So through the Kentucky FFA Foundation, and this is a really important story to me is through Kentucky FFA, I had an opportunity as a, as a, a board of trustees member. Uh, I'm not sure if I was chairman at the time or not, but I had, um, um, one of the FFA officers was Megan Harper, the state, uh, officers. And she was supposed to be, um, job shadowing me and she was supposed to be learning from me that day. And we had a great day. We went to two or three of our locations and then we went to lunch. And I just remember, you know, so I had shared some of these same stories about, you know, faith, family, friends and farming and just, just these really great stories with Megan. And I remember we went to the Mexican restaurant and we sit down and our food comes and we'd had a great conversation and I'm getting ready to, to start eating and I look up and you know, Megan's looking back at me and then I'm starting to eat again and she's still looking at me. And I'm thinking, is everything okay? And she goes, she said, aren't we going to pray? And so, um, so anyways, and we did. And so that was the, that was the, the, uh, the first time maybe, uh, but it was definitely the, you know, since then I've always prayed no matter where I'm at. You know, we were doing it at home. My, you know, my wife and I would, would pray over a meal at home. But it was just living your value systems wherever you are, no matter what the expectation or the norm for other people is, is just to be yourself and, uh, do that. So Megan taught me a very valuable lesson and there's not been a meal that I've missed since whatever year that was, that whether I'm by myself in a group, no matter where I'm at, that that's, I just am who I am and, 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 uh, pray before meals. And so the, I guess the, the moral of that story is Megan was supposed to be learning from me. She was like a freshman in college and, and I learned an extremely valuable lesson from her. So, so I think that would be something for young people watching this or listening to this is that you're, you're never too young to be a leader and not just a leader for people your age or people that are younger than you. You can be an awesome example and a great leader to, to people uh, that, that are older than you. But the best piece of advice, uh, to get to your, your question, the best piece of advice that I've ever heard, uh, the athletic director at Embry-Riddle, uh, Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University, where I worked in Daytona Beach, Florida, a guy named Steve Ritter was the athletic director. And, uh, the first week I was there was the first time I ever heard it back in two thousand and one. He said, Hinton, if you want to be successful in life, surround yourself with talented people who you trust and enjoy being around. And I, I mean, you know, I was like, that's good. But he said that like every single day. He, I mean, I would just hear him say it over and over until it was ingrained in me. Surround yourself with talented people who you trust and enjoy being around. And so that's, that's gone on to be, that's the hiring policy. That's the one line hiring policy for Hinton Mills. That's the hiring policy for KWI. For every organization that I'm involved with, um, that's, that's what the hiring policy is. And that's how I do believe that you'll be successful in life is just, it's, um, it's, it's by surrounding yourself with the right type of people. And, uh, that every single one of those people are important and, and every role that they fill is important. And, and you need the right type of people that lift you up and that you can lift up. And, uh, I think that that's without a doubt, that's the most valuable, uh, you know, kind of work or life, uh, lesson that, that, that for me.
I love that piece of advice that you get to share and you share with so many FFA members. And I love that we have this podcast now, this outlet. So you get to share it with all Kentucky FFA members that listen to this on the podcast. So I just love that, that nugget you give.
It's, I have gleaned that information and it's part of how we have built the Kentucky FFA Foundation Board. It's been kind of our hiring guidepost too, is talented people that you trust and like being around. And it really does. It changes the game on your team. It's great. So philanthropy is all about giving back and you can give in your time, talent, treasure. Who's somebody who's poured into you that you would like to shout out?
Oh my goodness. That's, I think that's a tougher question there because there's so many people, you know, that have poured into me. I mean, uh, right now, I mean, you know, my coworkers, my wife, my, my daughter, I mean, every minute that I spend with Addie is, you know, it's just, I'm, I mean, I feel like I'm getting more out of it than she is. I hope that she's getting, you know, getting something out of it. But, um, you know, there, so there's, there's a few and I'll just briefly, Mr. Eddie Ward, my elementary school principal would be one of them. Um, in years ago, he poured into me and it's, and I'm still, you know, kind of, uh, getting stuff out of that. And from those memories is he would, uh, our principal, he would come in and knock on the door, you know, fourth grade and Miss Littleton answered the door and said, hey, I need all your boys. They all need to come, come to the gym. And so we went to this little elementary school called Fox Valley Elementary and all the boys would go to the gym and we would play basketball and none of us were ever going to be in the NBA. None of us were going to go to college more than likely to play basketball, or maybe even not on the high school team. But it really wasn't about basketball. It was about him having an opportunity uh, to try to mentor and, and to lead and be there. And it wasn't necessarily, even though Adam Hinton of the world were impacted and, and some of my closest friends. It was really who he was really there for was the guys that didn't have a strong male figure at home. And then what I also didn't know until years later is I thought the boys were getting all the attention back in the classroom, you know, the, the teacher, Ms. Tackett or Ms. Hilton Brand or Ms., Ms. Littleton, however the case was, was pouring in that same attention to, to the girls. So, um, it, you know, it starts with him. There's a guy named Don Flynn that was just hugely impactful in my life when I was going through one of the biggest challenges in my life. He was one of those guys that kept me, helped me stay focused on, on Christ and say, you know, stay focused on the, keeping the main thing, the main thing. But, you know, if, if I picked, I don't think I could pick one person, but like my friend group growing up, the people that have poured the most into me is, is my friend group, uh, starting at elementary school and all the folks that we picked up along the way, we're, we're all still friends to this day that we all still get together. We all still text each other. And it, and it shows me and it, and it's taught me as a father, how important it is even at an early age, that the people that you are, that you're around as a child, how influential they are. And I'm just so thankful that the people that I have been around throughout my life have been just good, solid people, that they've been people that are, you know, salt of the earth people, blue collar, uh, people that they're, they're guys that are good dads, they're guys that are good husbands, that they're, you know, they're, that, you know, good, um, you know, Christian examples to me personally. And, and so, you know, my shout out is to, to those guys. I'm just so blessed to have that, that circle of friends from a really early age until, you know, till mid forties to be able to, to just impact me so much. And, and, uh, um, and then my parents, you know, how could you not? How could you not give a shout out to your parents? Our house was the house that everybody came over to their house. And part of it was because my parents were just, you know, good, you know, protective parents. And, and so were the, the, the parents of my, my peer group. But I now see how huge that is to, you know, to have that place that you go. You know, if you're going to Bud and Polly Hinton's house, that there wasn't going to be any shenanigans going on. There wasn't going to be any drinking and there wasn't going to be any cigarettes and there wasn't going to be any foul language or any of the, I mean, it was, but we were going to have fun. We were going to have a great time. And you're going to be around, uh, great people and we were going to have a curfew. And, uh, so I'm, I, you know, I'm thankful to, to so many people, but that.
That's a good list. That's a great list. And I love your talk about community and, you know, I love the quote of like, you show me your friends and I'll show you your future. Uh, you've lived that out so well and it's been a good testament and, and I love seeing that. Well, Adam, our last question we ask all of our guests is, um, a little bit more of a insight to who they are. And it's a, it's a fun one, but it's what's something that you're loving right now that's helping you grow? And this could be anything. It could be a gadget. It could be a book. It could be a habit, whatever.
Hmm. Okay. So man, that's, that's tough. Um, I'm going to say, um, you know, again, I can't, I can't just have one answer, but I've got two. So one is, so we started watching a TV show called The Chosen a handful of years ago and it just, we love it because I don't watch a lot of TV. Sheldon knows I don't watch TV. I don't, I used, didn't even know how to turn the TV on at this house until the, until the, the chosen. I'd quit watching sports and all these things. But basically if you don't know about it, it's, it's, uh, it's about the, the disciples, the twelve disciples and kind of the life of Christ. And it's more about those individuals and and their experience, but it's just really, really good. And so my wife watches it. My daughter, my ten year old, you know, she's been watching for the last few years. I mean, so I like come upstairs sometimes. We homeschool and sometimes I'll come upstairs and she's about four episodes deep in season two of The Chosen and, and watching it. So it's just been really good because it's, uh, I think that it's, you know, it's, it's both personal and, and family and spiritual growth for, for all of us. And then the, the other thing that I'm doing, uh, and as a morning routine is on my phone, I used to have, um, in, in this is, I spend still more time than I would like on Facebook, on social media. And part of it's because I'm a marketing person and part of it is because I love people and love to engage with people. But I've really tried, I feel like for me that I was spending too much time. So one of the things that I did, I moved where my thumb instinctively wanted to go and move the, the Facebook app out and move the Bible app in. And so each morning I start, they've got a, a daily refresh that has this guided scripture. And every morning, because I don't sit still very well, um, kind of all over the show. And so in the morning I'm, I'm just kind of raring to go. So as soon as I get out of the shower, I'll sit down and start eating breakfast and I'll, and I'll listen to that. It's usually just a few minutes and it really, it kind of sets the tone of your day. And there's, you know, there's a saying, something about, you know, it's something to the extent of, of, you know, uh, good in, good out, bad in, bad out. And so, you know, that's if you kind of, I believe if you start your day with things that you want to be focused on and, and try to keep that in the, you know, the back of your mind of, of the decisions, each decision that you make throughout the day. You know, basically your, a, a day is made up of all these individual little decisions. And all you have to do, you don't have to worry about them all at, at one time. You just worry about one decision at a time and making the right decision. And I think if you start each day, uh, kind of in the right frame of mind, it sure makes it a lot easier to continue to make one right decision after the next. And those small decisions add up to big decisions. So that's, that's what's going on with me right now.
That's great. Those are wonderful things, Adam. That I hope that people take that to heart and listen. Especially that's a good swap to move your social media app with the Bible app. That's a good one.
Yeah. Put, put something in, you know, move something that you want to spend a little less time with, move something that you want to spend a little more time with and be focused on and, 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 you know, retrain yourself. And then you may have to do it again and again.
Yeah. And thank you for your time today. And thank you for all you've done for all of the years, for hosting tractor parades and state officers and being a great advocate for teachers and students. I hope people check out KWI. We'll put this in the show notes for students to give that a glance if they think that's a career opportunity for them. Um, but just thank you for being a servant leader and really living your life by example. I think we'll glean a lot from your talk today.
I appreciate it. And, and one kind of shout out to all the teachers out there. If you're a student listening, and I got to speak to a group of FFA students in Mason County a few weeks ago. And one of the things that I told them is you don't necessarily realize at the time until you're much older, but people that are spending time with you as a young person and trying to share stuff, people that you guys are going to have as guests on your podcast. Ninety-nine times out of a hundred, they're not trying to get something out of it for them. They're trying to give to somebody else. And if you guys are, are, as you listen to, you know, to Sheldon and Ruth Ann's podcast, if you think about that, that people are just, that's what brings me joy is being able to share something with somebody else. So if somebody got something out of this today, uh, I consider myself blessed and I appreciate you guys allowing me to be a part of it.
Yeah. Well, we definitely did. So thank you so much. And you all, thanks for tuning into another episode of Growing Kentucky's Leaders.
Growing Kentucky's Leaders is a podcast from the Kentucky FFA Foundation. The music has been performed by Bourbon County FFA member Joe Fritsch. Production is provided by Isaiah Pruitt. Our artwork is by Julie Fritsch Creative. Your hosts are Sheldon McKinney and Ruth Ann Fink, and you can find us on all social platforms at Kentucky FFA.